All right, I will call over the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 16th, 2018, and first ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the good flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation in every land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to have our chaplain, Reverend Patrick Womack, back with us this evening to give our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we give you praise and we thank you for your glorious blessings of life, and we ask your blessing on this meeting that ultimately your will might be accomplished. Please give these your servants, our commissioners, discernment and wisdom as they decide matters, to decide them, oh God, well and according to law, and as representatives of the people. But, oh Lord, also give them courage to make right decisions even if they might not be popular. We ask your blessing, and we pray all of this with thanksgiving. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Next, we've got a public hearing for the sale of the historic hospital located at 1230 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, in the amount of $225,000 to Landmark Asset Services Incorporated, and expected 30-year loan to Landmark in the amount of $495,000 at 1.95 percent interest for the purpose of developing affordable housing for low-to-moderate income families. We have David Francis, our program administrator. David?
Good evening, Commissioners. Hope everybody's well this evening. Thank you. Tonight, we are having a public hearing concerning the sale of the historic hospital to Landmark Asset. Part of the sale is to make sure that the hospital goes and is repurposed, re-adaptive for low-to-moderate income families, elderly or veterans, as the case may be. But, we are having this public hearing as a part of the affordable housing for low-to-moderate as part of North Carolina General Statutes 153A-378. And that sale of the historic hospital is under North Carolina General Statutes 160A-267 and 160A-279. Just to give you a quick overview of the sale of the hospital and why we're doing this. This, first, is the rendering of how the hospital will look under the new name of Brookmont Lofts. Present use, the school board administrative offices are occupying the front of the building, the 1926 portion. The back, longer side of the building is the 1950 portion that's been vacant since 2012. Since Landmark's creation 30 years ago, the Landmark Group has completed or has under development more than 300 million worth of mixed-use projects to revive downtowns, restore aging neighborhoods, and create affordable housing in North Carolina, South Carolina, Maryland, Florida, Georgia, Tennessee, Texas, Virginia, and Wisconsin. So, they're a little bit of everywhere. The Landmark Group is partnered with local governments, housing authorities, nonprofits, and private investors. The Landmark Group usually serves as a general partner for its projects, assuming the financial responsibility both during the building and operational phases of the building. Landmark has experience in design, construction, and property management. Landmark Group has over 4,000 units currently managed now. So, just to give you some idea of some of the projects that Landmark has done in North Carolina, this is Eddington renovated an old high school in 1988 for 38 affordable units. Central school apartments for another working family down in Bessemer City. In Crampton, North Carolina, a school that was built in 1920, repurposed for 40 affordable housing units. Cleveland, or, excuse me, Clayton, North Carolina, Cleveland School was built and operated in 1927, about the same age as their hospital, and now it's 25 units for elderly. Bane Mill Lofts, which is a recent project, turned into 70 different units for affordable housing. Waco, Texas, constructed in 1912, in 2010 converted to 104 affordable housing units. Ashboro, the Ashboro Lofts was built in 1917 and converted to 70 loft units for families. And Albemarle, which is one of the most more recent projects they've done, was an old elementary school in the center of downtown, provides 53 homes for elderly residents. Preservation North Carolina and Landmark partnered on this project, cost about $6.2 million, have the same kind of financing, li-tech, federal, state, and historic tax credits, much like our hospital will as well. Landmark Group proposes to renovate the hospital into 54 units, one and two bedrooms. Project will cost roughly $8.7 million to complete, up about $1.7 million from 2016 when we tried this project. And the option to sell the former Haywood County Hospital is the grant applications were due January 18th. County received a perfect score in March. Second round of information to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency is due May 11th. If the site is chosen, closing by May 15th, 2019, county will receive $225,000 at closing. County would pledge a loan of $495,000 at 1.95 percent for 30 years to complete the project. Landmark Group would stay in place as the landlord through the 30-year term. And the Brookmont Lofts funding sources, John Stiltner's here, who can describe more about how the funding sources work in conjunction with their project.
Thank you, John. Gentlemen, thank you for having me here this evening. It's a pleasure to be back. Thank you, David, for working so closely with me to prepare this presentation and help me work on the hospital. As David's, I work for Landmark Asset Services, known as Landmark Group. We're a family-owned company. We've been around for a little over 30 years. Dwayne Anderson was the founder of our company and passed away a few years ago, and that's almost the same time that I was put on the road to work with communities and contractors and look for these amazing buildings with possibilities of adaptive reuses and revitalizing downtowns and communities. We're on our third generation. Currently, it's, our CEO and owner is second-generation daughter of Dwayne Anderson, but I work side-by-side with Sam Sarai, who's grandson, and he is doing amazing jobs. I'm hoping one day he'll let me loose, pay me a retirement, and carry this thing forward for another 30 years. He's doing a great job. We're really enjoying what we do, which is very important, I think, for everybody to enjoy what they do. I come from working for Landmark, building these projects, to now working on financing, layered financing, filling out tax credit applications, and working with communities and third parties for environmentals and structural reports and pricings. And as David was saying, we use layered financing and equities to be able to accomplish these projects. $8.7 million for Haywood Hospital, I think it's sneaking up a little bit on us, but we're covering it with deferred fees. First off, it's the competitive application process, which is due May 11th, and we're in line to complete that early because my daughter's graduating and I've been threatened, so we're going to complete that a little bit early and get it outdoors so I can go to Swanee, Tennessee. But, the federal historic, or the federal li-tech credit comes, is awarded through that application process, which brings the majority of the equity to the project to allow it to be funded, to be built. With Haywood Hospital, we worked over the past couple of years to have it listed on the National Register, which brings on the historic credits, and it's a double-layer credit. Federal historic credit's 20 percent of basis, the state historic credit for this particular county's 15 percent. So, we layered all that together, sell that for equity, and on top of that, we will be requesting from State Housing Finance Agency to loan us money through their Workforce Housing Loan Program to help support and fund the project, as well as conventional financing. And we still have somewhat of a gap to achieve the numbers that we've come up with, and $1.4 million more than what it was when we priced it out with contractors and abatement contractors years ago, and several other things, and the market had went up in price. So, we're hopeful and confident about the project and the numbers, but we never know if it's going to be awarded, but we're going to give it our best shot. We're asking the county to support us and the project and help fill that gap in financing by granting this 30-year loan to the project to be paid back at a 1.9 percent interest rate in a term of 30 years. And projects will take about 13 months to complete. We will find out in August of the awards that are allocated through the state agency. It takes about six months to get all the financing and all the parts and pieces together to close on the project and get the construction underway. And like I said, it takes about 13 months, so we're looking to place in service in 2020, start construction in between March and May of 2019, and complete project midsummer of 2020, and looking for four months to rent up, fill the project up, convert to the loans, and get rid of the construction financing, and look after, manage, and maintain this property for the next 30 years, and hopefully even beyond that. We are in cycles of rehabilitating projects that we've done in the past. DA Swain, which was on the presentation, is one that we're also resubmitting for rehabilitation. So, I know it's, we say 30 years, but our heart's in it to stay as long as health allows us to. So, thank you all for letting me come speak with you this evening, and if you have any questions, forward them, David, or contact me personally, and I'd be happy to answer them if I can. If I cannot, I will find an answer for you. And thank you all very much.
Commissioners, have any questions before we open up for public hearing? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Just got a few more pictures, show of the new renderings. This is the overall outside layout. John, if you have any questions or comments about this?
This overall site plan, in the site plan, we have put sitting areas, covered picnic shelters. It will also have grills, place for people to have recreation outside of the project. We also are providing one interior storage room for every apartment, so those things that you don't want in your unit, you have a place that you can lock it up in a place in the building so that it's not on the outside, it's not cluttering your apartment. They're roughly about 20 square foot for each apartment and storage. It will have computer facilities with printers, computers, free Wi-Fi. It will have exercise room, a large community room with kitchenette for birthday parties and tenant functions, and also parties, Halloween parties, different things that they do throughout the year. And it houses 31 one-bedroom units and 23 two-bedroom units. It have onsite, site manager 40 hours a week, along with maintenance man 40 hours a week, and somebody to housekeeping part-time. Washer and dryer hookups in every unit. We will also have laundry facilities throughout the project. For those who do not have washers and dryers, they'll have a facility onsite where they can wash their clothes as well. Doing a buffer on the parking lot to give some privacy to the neighborhood and to the project itself. And these are picture, or layouts of typical one- and two-bedroom unit as we have conceptually designed currently. More layout and kind of how it fits in the building with the one- and two-bedroom units.
That's all for the presentation that we have. We received a bit of good news over the weekend. There was three projects in Haywood County. The first project, one of the projects did not meet the criteria and fell out. The second project, we learned, was not going to be able to complete all the necessary requirements that needed to be complete for Phase Two, so they're dropping out. So, this will be the only project submitted for Haywood County for May 11th. And there's only one project awarded per county, so that helps out even more so.
Sure. Okay, thank you for that presentation. I'm going to open this up for the public. Now, we'll have a public comment in just a second. If you want to speak about this particular issue, the historic hospital sale, then now would be the time to come forward. Okay, well, we've been talking about it for years, so, not this particular sale, but this hospital. Commissioners, you got anything to add right now?
It's just been a process. You know, we've been trying to repurpose the hospital, and this is probably, kind of, had the same efforts, but this seems to be more promising right now.
Yeah, again, very optimistic about the project. We're with a good group of people who I know are concerned and really want to see this project cross the finish line for Haywood County as well, too. John and his staff's been wonderful to work with and very easy to work with, and it's been a pleasure to work with them, so I'm hoping for the best for this.
Okay. All right, I'll close the public hearing, and thank you very much, David. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to public comment session. I've got a couple folks that have signed up for public comment. Then, after those folks speak, if anyone else would like to come forward, they're more than welcome to. We like to limit the comments to about three minutes. First person, and I've got two up here, I don't know which order they came in, but David Ikas. David, come on up.
Thank you. Evening. Honorable Commissioners, my name is David Ikas. I am a Haywood County taxpayer, father and grandfather. I come before you to ask that you consider Haywood County's school safety from terrorist-type actions to be a priority in the Board's discussions. Recent events nationally and locally indicate that Haywood County's school system is not immune from this threat. To date, local events have been non-fatal. One cannot know if the same can be said about the future. As the county has spent several million dollars on a first-class structure for stray dogs, I believe the lives of Haywood County students are deserving of being valued better than stray dogs by their county government. As a Vietnam veteran, I have an understanding of terrorist attacks and what it takes to prevent or foil them. At one end of the spectrum is hardening the school structure or campus. At the other end is the mental health treatment of the probable attackers. I have spoken to local law enforcement regarding this issue, and I understand there are local, state, and federal laws and regulations that touch on the matter. These include fire, health, and right to privacy, among others. I would not want to see ugly national headlines indicating Haywood County protected stray dogs at the cost of student lives. At this school, as this school year draws to a close, the Board has an opportunity to plan affordable solutions this summer to be in place the next school year. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. I am confident you will take the appropriate action.
Thank you, Mr. Ikas. Next is Ted Carr.
Mister Commissioner, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, Ted Carr. I, too, am concerned about safety in our schools. The fire alarm goes off, and students obediently file out the door down the halls into the parking lot. Now, I'm concerned that a deranged person pulls the fire alarm, and students obediently file out the door, and somebody's waiting outside with a machete to attack them. Schools are now targets, and something that was installed for safety is now something that's used for harm. I look to the Commissioners as the watchdogs for the schools, and so I ask that the Commissioners instruct the school safety administrator to research modifying the response procedure to a fire alarm. Teachers should take a quick look out the door of the classroom to see if there's any danger in the hall, and if it's safe, then let the students come out. I think that the, today, the situation is much more likely to be mayhem waiting in the hall than a raging fire. A related concern is not being able to quickly secure the students safely in the rooms. All classroom doors should be lockable from the inside, probably with a key, but perhaps with a thumb knob. So, I ask that the Commissioners ask the school's safety administrator to determine if all classrooms can be securely locked from the inside to get the students in the classroom safely. And if that's not the situation, then I think a proposal should be presented. Third gentleman, adding to the gun laws that are not enforced now is not the solution to school safety. Guns themselves are not the problem. The person holding the gun is the problem. When a school official recommends that a student go for a mental evaluation, then the doctor, the school, law enforcement, and the parents should, oh, wait, wait, wait. That is not possible. When a student is evaluated, the only person that can get the information from that evaluation is the student. No one else can be involved, and the problem is state and federal laws, similar to HIPAA laws. So, I ask that you petition Congressman Meadows, our Senators Burr and Tillis, to work on that problem and come up with a solution that eliminates that barrier. And finally, I'm concerned that our schools are now targets for unstable persons to attack our students. When schools are noted, noted to be gun-free, a gun-free zone, they invite persons bent on doing harm. So, instead of signs like that, the sign should say, "Many of our staff have concealed carry permits and are armed. Do not enter this school with the intent to harm students and staff." No teacher should be mandated to train and carry, but a staff member that is willing to do that should be compensated, and a law similar to the castle doctrine, council doctrine, Mr. Chip, should be attached. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Okay, does anyone else like to speak during the public comment session? All right, if not, we will close the public comment session and move to constituent concerns. We'll, I'll start over here on this side today. Brandon, do you have any constituent concerns?
No, no concerns. I think maybe just to add to what Mr. Ikas and Mr. Carr had brought up. We had a discussion probably a few weeks ago on our work session on school safety, and I know that a lot of the folks are looking into that right now and looking at ideas. Unfortunately, there's not one, one solution that's going to solve that problem. So, just for you guys' information, they are looking at that right now, but other than that, I don't have anything else.
I was just thinking, the last two speakers. I do know that the school board and Bill Nolte, I believe they've met with the sheriff's departments and have a lot of ongoing discussions, so maybe we could invite Bill Nolte to give us an update on where we stand with school safety, because I know that's all they've been talking about for the last two or three weeks.
Okay, Joel, maybe you could just touch base with Bill, Bill Nolte, or I can, and see if they've been discussing it, because we did talk about it at the work session, 10, 15 minutes, and I know that they are looking into that and taking those things seriously. And, but, you know, our role in it is limited, but we did ask and discuss with them what types of, what procedures they're putting in place for school safety.
And I do know we added half SROs, so all high school and elementary schools have SROs now.
Okay.
I'm not elementary, middle school, I'm sorry. Middle school and high schools.
That is Sharon Royal, Mel, I'll have one.
Let's see, I know there's a couple comments about the animal shelter that were made, and so why don't I just follow up with this. We've got a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Haywood County Animal Shelter and Adoption Center, Wednesday, April 25th, 2018, at 4:00 PM. Everyone is invited to come to see that and participate. All right, you want to make any comments about that?
Oh, let's see, everybody kind of, it is completed. I had gone the other night, and it's, people were impressed with it. It's, you know, it's not elaborate, but it's going to serve the county for decades, and I'm glad that we, you know, made that investment. And as I've said before, when you buy $30 worth of pet food, you raise enough sales tax to cover the debt service for your, for your part for the whole year. So, it's, I think it's $2.30 a year is what it costs to, per person in Haywood County for the animal shelter. So, we've got, unfortunately, to arm the schools and put counselors in there, which is what I think we need, we're probably looking at about a million dollars a year to do that. And that would reoccur every year, so it's an expensive solution. I think that will ultimately be the solution, because I do think we need to have, I think we need to have SRO officers in every school, including elementary, because if I was a terrorist, I would go to the middle, to the elementary schools, and because I think that's where you could get the most bang for your buck, unfortunately. So, but I do think we ought to, you know, of course, I'm going to trust the school board to make the right decision, because it is an expensive prospect, and I think Bill said that when we were talking about it. So, but anyway, but the animal shelter, yeah, that'll be on Wednesday, next Wednesday at 4 o'clock, and I'd like for everybody to come and see what we've got there. The employees are, the good thing about that also, the employees are not having to vaccinate animals on the same table they're eating their lunch now. They'll be able to, you know, have a separate room for that, and it's very, it's a very functional facility. The rescue groups have stepped up in doing the adoptions there, so that's saving the taxpayers money. And so, it's, and then some of the, there were some things that we cut out that they put, that the rescue groups bought and put back in that was really needed. When you see how it operates there, and if you go, you'll see the different, just from the way they feed the animals and everything, how much more functional it is. We cut that out and they put it back, so it's, hopefully, y'all will get to go see and see what, you know, kind of what, what they have to do. But, our employees will be protected, too. That's another good thing. Our employees will be protected in the way that the cages work and everything to be for the animals and everything, so.
All right, thank you. That's it with constituent concerns. Next, we've got administrative agency reports, Senior Resource Center Community Annual Report, an update. John Chacon, Senior Services Manager's with us this evening. John?
Thank you very much, Commissioners. We don't come very often, at least just to update you on what's going on and to thank you, instead of asking you for something else. We're just wanting to let you know what's going on. So, I have the 2017 report, which I'll just run through real quick. You guys have the report with you also. The first one is Senior Resource Center Visitors. That's a little deceiving. We just have people coming in for meetings, like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, those kinds of things, and that's the 2,000 number. Information Assistance Referral, that is when somebody comes in, needs information about a program, something in the county, something outside of the county, and that's over 10,000 people in the year. So, Odile at the front desk deals with most of those and does a really great job with that. The Senior Healthcare Insurance Information Program, we served 538 clients this last year and saved them $245,000. And what's kind of neat with that, we get a big whopping about $5,000 a year to run that from the state. So, it's, it's a good program, and it helps a lot of seniors, saves them that prescription cost each year, so it's really good. Volunteer Center, the Haywood Volunteer Center, we placed 79 new volunteers. Richard Reeves with the wood program, served 311 loads of wood this last year. Richard is phenomenal. Every time I see the truck, it's got another load of wood. So, it's a really impressive, it's just unbelievable how much he does. Senior Leadership Program, last year, we had another 12 new graduates, and so that was really good. Two of them are here tonight, Kevin and Gina. And all the senior leadership program graduates give us numbers every quarter, and so that number there with 5,958, that's for the whole year. So, those, just from the, that doesn't include other people, it just includes the senior leadership people, and not everybody is reporting on that, too. So, we'll be doing that program again this summer, starting in June. We'll hopefully- We'll hopefully have another full class. There'll be about Class 19, I believe. So, we've had a whole bunch of good people come through and then volunteer, go on to volunteer in the community, so it's a very important program. Our In-Home Aides Program, we have four aides and served 2,765 hours. And then we do have a contract with the county that serves, we did another 934 hours with the HHS. Congregate Meals in our three sites throughout the county, through Maggie Valley, Waynesville, and Canton, we served 8,787 meals to those seniors throughout the county again. Our Foster Grandparent Program, where we connect seniors with, with children in the schools, and again, this, we serve all seven western counties, but this is just the number for Haywood County. 36,000 hours of, with 34 volunteers and about 70 clients. So again, getting those seniors out, getting them active, getting them participate with the, with the children, or ju, vice versa. That was the Senior Companion, that we connect seniors with other seniors that need help in the community, and they may take them out for lunch, may take them to get groceries, those kind of things, and it doesn't cost anybody anything. The volunteers get a whopping $2.65 an hour to do that program, so they, it helps their income a little bit, it doesn't affect their Medicaid or, or any of their other incomes, so that helps them out. Again, the Foster Grandparent Program buys 25,000 hours with 26 volunteers, going out to the, the schools, enter, enter, entering with the kids, trying to, many of them don't have a grandparent, so it really connects that child, and it also makes, makes it pretty good for the senior. Again, gives them the reason to continue on. Caregiver list, we gave out 74 lists this last year. The caregiver list is, we, well, somebody wants to get on the list, we do a criminal history check on them, and then put them on the list, and then we have people come in and sign a contract saying that, you know, they're receiving a list. But again, it's helping the community get, get that information. They need, may need hospice, those kind of things in the community. One of our other volunteers, Bruce Johnson, did, has done taxes for us for the last four years now, and he gives all the donations he gets back to the Senior Resource Center. This year, he served 155 people. He asks for a donation, he just gives us all that money back. And so with that, we're able to do, some of you guys have been to the, we've had a big shebang with hot dogs and hamburgers for our seniors, and some other activities, too. Without that money, we wouldn't be able to do that, and we don't want to use the county money for that, but we are able to use some fun things to do with that money, so that really makes it a big thing. So, I think that's a great deal. Can't think, another person, just like Richard Reeves, believes in the program, believes in what we're doing, and so that's really neat, too. Kind of sad news is Dr. Vergis, probably you all know about her. She is actually retiring, so Memory Care is looking for another doctor to take her place. Again, an important program for people with Alzheimer's in the community, and it's just not serving our community, but the seven county, western counties, too. They're having a hard time finding a doctor, and there doesn't need to be any specifics, but Dr. Vergis, of course, was from our county, so that made it so much nicer. So we're really hoping that they can find another person to fill that position. So again, it's helping our people in the community with Alzheimer's and memory loss. So I think that's so important, too. Again, our, it, we're just trying to keep seniors active through education, services, and fun. We don't want them to go into nursing homes, we'd rather keep them at home. Of course, we all know that it's going to make it cheaper if they're at home. On that second page, you could see a host of activities that we did over the last year, the classes, all kinds of things, trips. We went on several trips, and a lot of those trips are, we try to include education along with that. So again, they're learning as they're getting out and doing some things, and so we really, our first quarter, our Creative Living Book, within two days, some of our trips are already full. And so we're using a couple of the old Mountain Projects bands that we've converted into our use, and so they're getting some great use on, on the trips, and the seniors love doing it. In fact, Michelle Clayder, that is the coordinator, the program coordinator, asked me the other day, "We're doing too many fun things, we need to do some more serious things." So, you know, the, the unfortunate, not unfortunate, but the community does look for us for activities and, and again, keeping them active. Again, bingo, and, and little things like that, getting them out and again, doing things in the community. So we're really, like I say, continuing on. Our goal is not met, of course. When I go to meetings and when I go to events and I don't see people, I know, we, I know then we need to continue getting that word out and getting the, the information out to seniors, and, and we're even trying to figure out now how to do trips for new people, and because our regulars sign up for all the trips, and we don't have room for old, for new people, so we're going to do a lottery on some trips, too. So, just again, to give them, people new, that are new to the program, a chance to get out. I gotta, we did send out an email for, and we have four of our senior leadership people here tonight, but one of these, a lady that lives in Florida, but then comes here, did write a little note, and I wanted to share with you, because she tells me this story quite a few, few times, and she would appreciate me letting you know. She says, "Commissioners, we would like to express our appreciation for the two people we have gotten to know the best at the Senior Resource Center, Michael, Michelle," Michael, I mean, she's going to get me, "but Michelle and John, and two, for two, number two, for your very gracious support of the programs there. The town in which we live in, in Florida, is not so fortunate to have so much support for programs for seniors that you kind folks give. Michelle and John worked diligently to arrange a large variety of events, classes, and programs that are fun, educational, and for great benefit to us. This was, they are like family to us with their warm, caring personalities. Thanks very much for your continued support, Dr. Leo and Eva Salter from Lake Juneauleska." So again, just wanted to update you guys. We appreciate you guys' support always, and we'll continue to work hard at keeping our seniors happy.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Jamie, questions to John?
No questions, just want to thank you all, and especially the volunteers that get out there and make this work for our seniors, and, you know, I think that was our goal when we tried to, you know, set this place up and all, and try to help our elderly and hopefully keep them in their homes and save them money, and...
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, John, I do want to thank you for all y'all do, and that letter really sums up, you know. I, I had a friend, and I hope you get Dr. Vergis, you know, that position replaced, but I had a friend that, that her, her parent is in early stages of memory loss, and she just recounted all the things that Dr. Vergis had helped her with, and of course, the Maple Leaf Adult Care, which is right above there, is invaluable to her and her family, and basically, this is basically consuming the family now, because they have someone that has, have your, you know, round-the-clock care, if you will. But she's still able to stay at home, and I think through this program, they, they see ways to help her stay at home or stay with them. They, you know, they, they'll take her to her home during the day, and then they go get her at night and stuff, and Dr. Vergis really, I hope, I hope you can really find somebody of that caliber to replace that, but we, but I, I really appreciate it, and I hear it from people in the community, and just thank you for all y'all do.
Thank you.
Again, John, thank you. I think we all know that if you can keep our seniors active and keep them in the home, they're going to be with us longer. That's, and I'm sure research indicates that, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. Thank you for what you do and all the folks, the volunteers that help you. You know, I, I just turned 47 years old, and I'm realizing I'm getting there quicker than I, I thought I would, so we're all going to be there one day, and we appreciate the county taking care of our seniors.
Thank you.
John, did you say you had some folks with you? Did you want them to come up?
Uh, they didn't, they, they had told me they wouldn't rather...
They would rather not? Could you just stand up where you're at?
They don't even want to stand up.
Okay.
But again, thanks, guys. I appreciate your time.
All right. Well, thank you very much, John. We appreciate your report and what you do.
We see you sitting back there, though.
Yeah. Okay, next is discussion, adjustment of the agenda. I don't believe we, we don't have anything, right, to just, so, we don't have anything. There's not any changes to the meeting.
No, no changes.
Uh, so next is the consent agenda. First item on that is request approval of April 2nd, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Anyone have any changes to those minutes? All right. If not, we've got it re... What? Yeah, I'm going, I'm going to do the next one. Next one. Uh, next is request approval of March 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Greg West, Assistant Tax Assessor is here with us this evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request approval of the March 2018 refunds, releases, discoveries, and amendments, please.
All right. Commissioners, any questions of Greg? All right, I guess not.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Greg.
Sorry, Kirk, I was out of line, sorry.
You weren't out of line. I just, I was...
Oh, wow.
It's all right. I remember that one meeting, I messed up like almost every other time, so. I, I thought I was doing something wrong again, I thought, well, I think I'm doing it right.
I'm glad I'm not over there.
You've only made one mistake.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Next, we have Mike Matthews with us, our tax collector for the March 2018 tax collections update.
Good evening, commissioners. As of March 31st, 2018, our current collection rate is at 95.46%. That's up about .42% from this time last year, and our delinquent balance is at $2,808,356 and six cents.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of Mike regarding his report? All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of a budget amendment. Julie Davis is coming forward. This will be from the General Fund for Public Safety for the Sheriff's Office, $5,500 that they have received in contributions to be used for the summer camp for kids in July.
Good evening. Exactly. That's all.
You didn't want me to say all that, did you, Julie?
No, that was wonderful.
Didn't give you anything to say?
You did a great job, and I'm about to lose my voice, so this was a specially good night for you to do that. But this is a, a summer program the sheriff is putting together. He's got some volunteers, and he's got some food donated, but he also has some cash donations of $5,500, so we're just putting it in the budget, so he can spend it on some of the activities for the camp.
Do we know any particulars about the camp, so we could publicize it?
I don't think that they're out yet. There is a little bit of a blurb that was sent to me about what they're, they're, they say it's a Junior Deputy Day Camp, that they also said it's not the official name, so I think they're still trying to work some things out, but it's some things for kids that I believe they're going to be doing some training and all kinds of fun things for kids this summer.
All right, junior deputy. So if you want to be a sheriff and...
That must be it.
You're a youngster, this is the thing to go to.
Probably, and I would think that if you would call the sheriff's office, somebody there would be able to give you some information about it, or what, what age group that he's going to have. I really don't know a whole lot about the camp.
Okay, well, if you'll tell him, then we'll announce it.
Okay, I sure will.
If somebody gets some information about it, we'll announce it.
I sure will.
All right, thank you, Julie. Anybody, any of you have any questions about that? Okay. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to old business. Only item on old business is to request approval of Second Amendment to Asset Purchase Agreement by and among Haywood Health Authority, Duke Life Point, Haywood Regional Medical Center, Duke Life Point, uh, Duke Life Point Partner, and then Duke Life Point Healthcare LLC and the county. And Haywood County, Chip Keyon is presenting that, our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is very similar to one that was approved late last year, at which time the First Amendment to Asset Purchase Agreement was approved after, after it was previously approved by Duke Life Point to permit the transfer at that time of, of $3 million from the sale proceeds to the newly-created Health Foundation, which of course is going to invest those funds for the healthcare of the people of Haywood County. This particular one is, happens to be from, from the remaining operation proceeds and earnings from the hospital authority, and this particular one is for $5 million of a $6.667 million account, so there's still going to be about $1.6 billion left there. There's still going to be $9 million left in the other account from the sale proceeds. So there's still more money coming to the county. So this money would come to the county, it's been approved by Duke Life Point, it has to be used for health-related purposes, as, as it's set forth in asset purchase agreement just as before, and that's the purpose of this, it will then be transferred presumably by the county to the, the newly-created foundation.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of Chip? We've been discussing the, the transfer, the Haywood Health Authority wants to, you know, they want to prob, be processing the transfer of those monies to the Haywood Health Foundation as soon as possible, so this is another transfer of those funds from the sale of a hospital, and the funds are to be utilized for healthcare for our citizens. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve this Second Amendment to the Asset Purchase Agreement as Chip presented.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to new business. This is, first item is request approval of appointment of Lisa Bradley to the Region A Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. We've got Sarah Jane Melton with us this evening. She is the Region A Area Agency on Aging Director.
Good evening. Glad to be with you all. Yes, I'm requesting that Lisa Bradley, who is the Adult Protective Services Supervisor for Haywood County HHS, be on the Region A Advisory Council Committee. That is a committee made up of members across the region that helps us make sure we meet the needs of seniors, just like Mr. Chacon was talking about a few minutes ago.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions of Sarah Jane? If not, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Lisa Bradley to the Region A Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is request approval of appointments of Nathan Eugene Sizemore and Virginia Jordan Song to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments. Joel Masburn, our county manager.
The two recommendations tonight are for Nathan Eugene or Gene Sizemore. Nathan Sizemore is presently serving on the Clyde Fire Department Board of Directors as chairman. He's a longtime resident of the town. He's, for 30 years, he's been associated with the Clyde Volunteer Fire Department, and then Virginia Jordan Song is a, has been a resident for 10 years, has never served on a governmental board or committee, but has been very active in civic affairs and volunteering in civic organizations, and those are the two recommendations for being placed on the Clyde Board of Zoning, the Clyde Board Zoning of Adjustments.
Commissioners, any questions of Joel? If not, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Nathan Eugene Sizemore and Virginia Jordan Song to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Next, we've got a request approval of change order for Bunell Lammons Engineering to test soils for the Jonathan Creek project in the amount of $5,500 to be paid from project contingency. David Francis?
Thank you, Chairman. For you, I'm seeking a request to change the scope of BLE for the testing of soils at the Jonathan Creek site to allow testing of a site A for additional testing of this soil to see if it will meet compaction requirements to move to our Jonathan Creek site. Back in November of 2017, we approved a contract with AFCON and with BLE to test soils, we were moving them from the public site. When we got going with, after we signed the agreement with... When we got going with, after we signed the agreement with Publix, there were certain soils that we were supposed to receive from them. When they started their excavation project, there were soils from the northwest corner that ended up being a lot wetter and damper than, than we could use. This, the damp soils would not allow us to use anything to compact out there at the Jonathan Creek site. They told us at the, one of our meetings, that the soil that we could receive would be roughly about 25 percent of the soil would be above the optimum moisture content that we had first originally thought, excuse me, third thought, I've gotta frog my throat, that, that we were first getting there. So that changed the whole dynamic of our project because what we based our project on was receiving, you know, good quality soil that could be compacted. So when we had to start considering if we were wanting to receive, you know, 25 percent of 25,000 cubic yards of wet soil, that would change the contract that we had with our contractor to have to dry out the soils, which had, you know, raised the price of the contract, because our, our contract with the contractor is to compact those soils, not to dry out soils. So that's why we, we started looking for another site to complete the project. Luckily, one, there was one in the Jonathan Creek community is site A, and so the, this scope would change that to where the BLE would allow, be allowed to go onto the property, test the soil at their facility, and that, the $5,500 covers those tests for the soil testing, that, that, those are dug out, put into bags, and taken down to a test laboratory to find out the moisture content of that soil. So, I'm glad to answer some more questions, I'm sure you might have some.
Commissioners, any questions about that?
I just wanna clarify that the soils we were supposed to get from Publix, from the public site.
Mm-hmm.
We weren't getting those.
We were not.
They were giving us soil from another place on the property that we did not contract to get, and the soil we were supposed to get, we weren't getting, and we never got.
That's correct.
Because I want the public to fully understand that we did our part of the borgin', but they didn't.
That's right.
And I just want that to be clear out there, because, you know, when you, when you compact soil, it has to be a certain material to be able to compact correctly. Once you compact that soil, then you can build on it. If it's not, if it, you can't just lay it out there and let it dry out, not in January or February. So, I just wanna make sure that the public totally understands that the soil we were supposed to get, we didn't get, and that's why we're doing this now. Since the site's prepared and ready, we might as well go ahead and go across the street and get that.
That's right.
Just wanted to make it be clear, but.
Yeah, the, you know, because our agreement that was with MAB, who's the developer for the public site, you know, listed, you know, in our conversations that we had, we were, you know, getting certain soils from certain areas.
Right.
Then when they started excavating out from that northwest corner, which is the corner up near closer to the highway, the soils came in extremely wet, and also, too, it's been an extremely wet winter as well, too. The, you know, so they posed, you know, two problems there, but it would not have been, you know, we would have been doing ourselves a big disservice if we took that wet soil, laid it on, at our property at Jonathan Creek, it would have been, you know, there was no reason to take somebody else's mud and create mud on their site.
Right.
So that, those are one of the reasons that we, we thought it was in the best interest is not to proceed with that soil. I, I know that, you know, I've gotten a couple of questions, well, they're using it somewhere else. I said, "No, they're not using it somewhere else, they're stockpiling it somewhere else."
Right.
You know, because it's too wet, it's just too wet to use.
Yeah, and the particular areas where the core borings were that we were under the, well, it was written in the contract that we were supposed to get, they're actually gonna use that to go back and fill in their wet soil that they took out, so.
Yeah, if, I don't know if you've been by there lately, but if you can see the amount of drainage pipes that they have in there, and the size of the drainage pipes, I could almost walk through them there.
You're right.
Yeah, they're, they're huge. The, but you know, they ended up with three springs, you know, almost streams there that they dug up and dug out that were not accounted for in the testing, so, the site ended up being undertested for what the, that they needed to be done there.
And that's, that's the point, is they didn't do enough borings to know what they had.
Mm-hmm.
But what the borings they did do, we, that was the dirt we were supposed to get, we identified, and that's not what they wanted to bring.
And for the public, that was the, the dirt that's on the front.
Where they caught along.
Part of the property where the old hotel was.
Where the, yeah, correct, where the whole hotel was, correct.
Well, I appreciate you and Chris staying on top of that and making sure that we got the correct soil, because it would have been a disaster if we'd had wet soil out there. A, you wouldn't be able to compact it, and then it would be stored there, it would be almost useless. We would have paid to have that placed there, and then we would have had to removed it and probably put something back. So I appreciate you, you guys staying on top of it and making sure that the county's interest was protected.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, you can think, it'd be roughly 6,000 cubic yards, you know, you try to figure out, you know, that's a 22-acre site, we'd had to open up the entire site and spread that out, you know, put it in lifts, dry that, you know, stockpile it, and spread it out, stockpile it, spread it out, and it, you know, it would have been, you know, a forever project at that point, we'd not gotten done. So this is, you know, this, you know, I, it's unfortunate that it turned out this way, but you know, again, it wasn't the county's fault, you know, you know, we relied on, you know, their engineering report, and, you know, from what, you know, their representatives told me that the soil, that, you know, that we would receive, and so I thought it was, you know, it was prudent at this time, you know, to seek other soil.
Kevin made a good point, that I think it's, it's positive, we called it at the beginning. I can't imagine going back in and cleaning up everything that's been spread out.
Yeah.
That would have been some kind of bill.
Yeah, it would have been, it would have been, that's right.
I was just gonna say, I, it's real frustrating to me as well, I mean, we actually had to jump through some hoops to try to get this done quickly so we could get the dirt, thought we were getting a good deal, and then it off, it, obviously, that makes you question as well if, if they even knew that that back soil was wet, because we only tested the front section of it. So, just frustrating to me as well that we done what we did, we've done our part, and they didn't stand up and do what they said they would do. So, I guess that's why we do have to move across the road. I mean, the site's prepared, we've got it ready, we've spent the money that we have so far, which the money we have spent, we can use that as well.
Correct.
I don't know if you wanna talk to that point as well, David?
The, what, with the engineering that we had at the Jonathan Creek site, it gave us topo, gave us out, out where we know what to build up to in the floodplain, so that can be used whether we were getting dirt from the, the MAB site, if we're getting dirt from, you know, Bethel, or getting dirt at another site, that plan still has to stay in place for no matter where that we receive dirt from, because to make that, that, you know, site usable, you know, for economic development, recreation, or whatever we decide that, you know, that site would be used for, that, that plan for the engineers will have to be used to, you know, to raise the elevation to get it out of the floodplain.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions about this? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order, a change order for Bunnel Lammens Engineering to test the soils for the Jonathan Creek project, the amount of $5,500 to be paid from contingency.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously, and then next, we have a budget amendment that I'll let Julie present, since I didn't let her talk much last time, I'll let her tell us about this one.
Now that you've approved this, this is just so that we can post this into our financial software, so this is the budget amendment for $5,500. We had 12,247 in contingency for the project, so this will reduce the contingency down to $6,747.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment to take $5,500 from project contingency to apply it to this change order for BLE to test the soils for the Jonathan Creek project.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got request approval for the Clyde Fire Department to borrow money from the local government federal credit union, the amount of $453,198, to be financed over a 10-year period for the purchase of a fire truck. Julie Davis?
The contracts we have with our fire departments require that when they want to borrow money to purchase equipment or a fire truck, that they come to the board to get approval. The Clyde Fire Department is planning on buying a, a truck, and there is, someone, Dean Castaldo from the Clyde Fire Department is here to tell you about what their plans are. The, they plan on financing it through the local government federal credit union over a 10-year period at 2.75 percent fixed rate. Their annual payments are $52,458.56, and this is just under the amount that they have been paying for another loan that they have paid off this year, so they're gonna be substituting this smaller debt service for the one they have now, and Dean Castaldo can tell you the information that they have. They had a public hearing, they have minutes, I think, are attached to your agenda.
All right. Dean, you wanna come forward?
Not really, but.
Well, you, you've been here all meeting, so I figured, at least give you the opportunity to speak.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioners and Chairman. Yeah, we are looking at replacing one of our oldest fleet trucks. It's, was purchased back in 89. Per our Department of Insurance requirements, we have to have so many vehicles, so, yeah, so we're looking at purchasing a new Pierce, is the manufacturer, at the rate of $453,000, which is a discounted rate for 10-year loan, 2.75 percent, and as Ms. Davis advised, our payments would be under what we just made on our current engine, or one of our engines, that we have paid off completely. The, the engine that we are replacing, however, like I said, is very old, putting too much money into it just to keep it, and we have to keep it because of requirements, so it's, it's, we're done with it, so. So we're requesting that, the approval for us to purchase this new apparatus.
All right, Commissioners, any questions of Dean? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that, to allow Clyde Fire Department to borrow the money from the local government federal credit union in the amount of $453,198, to be financed, financed over a 10-year period for the purchase of the fire truck as presented by Julie and Deputy Chief Castaldo.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Next, we have request approval of a five-year lease agreement with Winthrop at a cost of $11,875 monthly to upgrade county IT data storage, software, hardware, and disaster recovery to be paid beginning with the fiscal year 2018-19 information technology budget, because we are beyond a critical point regarding this issue.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, we are here for your approval to, in July, start a five-year operating lease with Winthrop that will provide us with new hard drives and disk storage, replace what we have, and upgrade it to approximately three times our size, so we should have plenty of growth.
Okay, and we discussed this, we just had a work session prior to this meeting and discussed this very issue, and it's my understanding that we basically have, as far as our storage capacity, we keep hovering around just 10 percent and getting closer and closer to not having any storage, and once we don't have any storage, nothing works.
I think you said we were at 94 percent, which means.
There's 10 percent, there was 10 percent available.
Oh, 10 percent available, okay.
And we've gotten, once you get to that 94 percent mark, that's when things start shutting down.
And I think to add to that as well, we are on a two-week basis going through and cleaning everything up, so it's more critical than critical, I guess.
Oh, yeah, we, we're spending a lot of staff time just trying to, to keep it, chugging along until we can get it replaced.
All right. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to approve the five-year lease agreement with Winthrop at the cost of $11,875 monthly to upgrade county IT data storage, software, hardware, and disaster recovery, to be paid out of the 2018-19 information technology budget.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Keep cleaning.
Yeah, keep cleaning.
Keep cleaning.
Okay, and anything for open session before we go into closed session? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4, which is economic development, 143-318.11A6, which is personnel, and 143-318.11A3, which is attorney-client privilege.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are in closed session. All right, we're on, back on after closed session, and after closed session, do we have anything else for open session?
So we meet again, what, 11 o'clock, is that right, at the Armory?
Thursday.
Thursday.
11 o'clock at the Armory Thursday is the divestiture of the property.
Property, wow.
All right. Okay, we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.